I will call the Milpita City Council meeting to order today is December 5, 2023, and this will be both in person and via Zoom. So City Clerk Guzzetta, would you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Barbado. Vice Mayor Chua.
Here. Councilmember Leon.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pham.
Mayor Montana.
And I am here. Okay, so before we adjourn to closed session, City Attorney Mutulapasi, please brief the public on the closed session item.
Thank you, Mayor, and I hope all the council will excuse my scratchy voice today. Tonight for closed session, you have conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency designated representative is Rick Bolanos. With Liberty, Cassidy, and Whitmore, the bargaining unit is Launa and UPEC. This includes Protech, MEA, Midcon, IAFF, and MPoA.
Thank you. And then I will call for the public comment for closed session on the closed session items. And so please note that tonight's public comment will be limited to one minute. Is there anyone from the public?
I have no speaker cards, and there is no member of the public in Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Seeing then, we are going to close session. Thank you.
Oh. Actually. Okay, I'll just go ahead. Okay. Okay. Meeting call to order. So we have a pledge of allegiance. Oh, okay, he's good. Never mind, never mind. We, I didn't know yet that he was here. Okay, so we're going to do the, um, the commendation.
Close session.
Close session.
Oh, oh, close session announcement. See the attorney?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, you guys considered the matters, uh, for, uh, labor negotiations pursuant to five four nine five seven point six. Uh, there's nothing to report out at this time.
Okay, thank you. So now let's, um, everyone rise up for the pledge of allegiance. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And now it is time for invocation. And we have the pleasure of our vice mayor leading the invocation this evening. Vice mayor?
Thank you, mayor. I, for invocation tonight, it's gonna be the, the children, the Saint John Children's School Choir. And this is, um, music by St. Francis. "Make Me a Channel of Your Peace", which is really appropriate for this period, uh, the holidays and also what's going on around us. Here you go.
Thank you, Ms. Gassari.
Make me a channel of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me bring your love. Where there is injury, your pardon, Lord. And where there's doubt, true faith in you. Make me a channel of your peace. Where there's despair and laughter, let me bring hope. Where there is darkness, only light. And where there's sadness, ever joy. Oh, master, God that I may never see. So much to be consoled as to console. To be understood as to understand. To be loved as to love with all my soul. Make me a channel of your peace. It is the pardon that we are hardened. And given now for sins that we receive. And dying, forever born to eternal life. Oh, master, God that I may never see. So much to be consoled as to console. To be understood as to understand. To be loved as to love with all my soul. Make me a channel of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me bring your love. Where there is injury, your pardon, Lord. And where there's doubt, true faith in you.
Thank you so much, uh, Saint John Baptist School Choir, Children's Choir. This is really awesome. It, it brings the message to, when there is hatred, let me bring you love. Where there is injury, your pardon, Lord. And when there is doubt, true faith in you. Thank you so much. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, vice mayor. That was very nice. Thank you to the students at Saint John, Saint John the Baptist, uh, Catholic school. And now it is time for our, uh, presentations. So we are having a post, posthumous commendation for Navy veteran, Navy veteran Phil Conini, accepted by Mr. Jim Arthur. And I will go out there and make that presentation. Okay, here we go. So, so the City of Melpitas presents this commendation to Phil Conini, esteemed Navy veteran. On behalf of the Melpita City Council, I, Mayor Karen Montana, commend and posthumously recognize Mr. Phil Conini. Phil joined the Navy at seventeen years old and was a sailor at the battleship USS, USS Missouri in World War Two, where he served until nineteen forty-six. After his military service, Phil became a police officer for the New York Police Department, where he served for eighteen years. In nineteen seventy-one, he planted his roots in Melpitas, where he and his wife, Jeannie, spent their time serving and being part of the community. Phil enjoyed weightlifting at the Barbarly Senior Center and always waved hello to those who passed him by. Thank you for your service, and you will be missed. Presented on this fifth day of December twenty twenty-three. And this is for you. You would say some words, please, Mr. Jim. The, uh, the Sunbruce Canini. Join us on Zoom.
Yes, the Sunbruce Canini is already available, and he has been promoted to speak.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I hope you can hear me. My dad wanted to leave New York City, and he came to Melpitas. And, uh, he absolutely loved Melpitas. As a matter of fact, his plate said, uh, happy ex-New Yorker. Um, his license plate. Uh, he absolutely loved Melpitas. He loved the PD. And, uh, we had a memorial service, uh, and the chief and the people were wonderful. And the lady who also helped was Lucy Carlton, who used to be a police officer in Melpitas and then became one of the first female police chiefs, uh, in the, uh, state of California. So it's honored, uh, if you knew my dad, you would have loved my dad. Uh, he's a great, great guy, uh, wonderful person, and always was willing to help and always a patriot. Thank you very much. Uh, it's overwhelming, um, and it just happens to be my birthday. So thank you very much, Mayor. And, and everyone else, thank you. I loved it. I loved the, uh, the choir, too. That was great. My father would love that. He would have loved it. Thank you very much. I, I really appreciate it. Uh, and we're gonna come back out there. I love California. Just that we have babies here, we can't leave them. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you so much for, uh, your kind words and happy birthday. And it was, uh, for it to be your birthday on this day of celebration of this commendation that was a gift to you. So would you like to say something, Mr. Phil?
I can't follow that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You don't wanna say?
Really love this, too. So he, uh, you know, and I wish, uh, Lucy Carlton was here, but she, I think she's still out of the country. But luckily, we got all the Bruce tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Jim Arthur. Arthur, thank you so much. And now let's move on to the public forum. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that does not appear on today's agenda. Public forum will be limited to one minute. So call for speakers, uh, from the floor.
I have two speaker cards. The first is Stephen Ballsball, followed by Voltaire Montemayor.
And you may proceed. Hello, Steve. Good evening.
Steve Ballsball, Melpitas. Good evening, everyone. On April eighteenth, the City Council approved a hundred thousand dollars to, uh, for pickleball improvements in Melpitas. That was over seven months ago. And unfortunately, to date, there's zero dollars has been spent and no noticeable progress that I can, can discern. Uh, moving forward, this is not a popularity contest. What's really needed is, it's an allocation decision, and you've got usage and you've got desplegued data uh, that cities perform, and there's additional information beyond it. That should be the driving factor on, on what you conclude. The city data shows that there's a need for strong, strong need for pickleball in the city of Melpitas, and in a lot of ways, that data is understated. Uh, I guess in conclusion, I'm behind times. We need leadership from the city to make things happen.
Thank you, Steve. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Very much. Next?
Next, we have Voltaire Montemayor.
My name is Voltaire Montemayor of Melpitas. Yeah, I'm, that's again, um, we, um, the posthumous commendation, I'll mention ro- wrote words, though. And, but let me start on the pickleball. I haven't started tennis. I haven't started pickleball, but I'll be there, buddy. I was talking with him, and I'm good in table tennis. They're all related. Now, um, uh, yeah, the posthumous, uh, one of the cases is my, uh, youngest sister. Born also after my dad's, uh, death. And, um, I've seen the uniform. I came to America through my brother-in-law in the Navy. It isn't my sister, my sister to mom, mom to me. So I'm now in Melpitas. And I, anyway, that song, I like that song. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Montemayor. Okay, so moving on to the announcements of the conflict of interests and campaign contributions. So we have our city attorney, Michael Mutalpassi.
Thank you, Mayor. I ask you, Mayor, and each of the city council members, whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest that relate to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Barbadillo.
None.
Vice Mayor Chua.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Councilmember Pham.
None.
Mayor Montana.
I am a none.
I further ask whether any of the members of the, or all, each of the members of the Melpita City Council, please disclose any campaign contributions of one hundred dollars or more received within the last twelve months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda or contributions received from the development project applicant for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Barbadillo.
None.
Vice Mayor Chua.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Councilmember Pham.
None.
Mayor Montana.
And I am a none. Thank you very much.
Please let the record reflect there are no reported conflicts.
Thank you. And now I'll read the Melpita City Council Code of Conduct. Be respectful and courteous. Words, tone, and body language do matter. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the council dais. Disclose conflict of interest and affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. Council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. So now moving on to the approval of the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to make any changes on the agenda? Did someone raise their hand? Because for some reason, okay, I saw your name and then it disappeared. Okay. Mayor. Seeing none, so moved to approve the agenda.
Second.
Has been moved by Vice Mayor Chua and seconded by Councilmember Leanne. So now we will make a vote.
Councilmember Barbadillo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Councilmember Pham.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
And I am a nigh. Thank you. And pass unanimously. So now we'll take the consent calendar.
Staff, do you have any changes to the consent calendar?
No changes. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And ask, um, so is it, is it okay to proceed with, uh, as the consent calendar as agendized? And I'm going to ask the public for any comment on the closed, uh, consent items? Anyone? Public? Okay. What about on Zoom?
I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so I need a motion for the approval of the consent items. And then we have Vice Mayor Chua.
So move.
Okay, so it's moved by Vice Mayor Chua and
Second.
Has been seconded by, uh, Councilmember Leanne. Okay, so now we're gonna call a, call for the vote.
Councilmember Barbadillo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Councilmember Pham.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
And I am a nigh. Thank you very much.
So now we will be moving on to leadership and support services. So City Attorney, would you read the title on item sixteen?
Attorney or me?
Sorry?
Me or the attorney?
Oh, sorry. Sadie, my city manager.
Either one of us. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight, item sixteen is to receive an update from Senator Ayesha Wahab. I believe she's joining us by Zoom, and will provide an overview of recent legislative activity and accomplishments. So we'll turn the time over to the senator.
Thank you, guys. Um, I really just appreciate the time that you guys are offering me. I wanna spend a little bit of time to go over the legislative update and provide not only the residents of Melpitas, but also the city council and staff to be able to just kind of ask questions here directly from me. Uh, we are freshmen senator. Um, I also have staff on this call, and we just wanna provide some of the updates legislatively and then also, um, some budget wins and what we can do working together moving forward. Um, I believe that there is a slide deck, uh, presented, I just wanna make sure. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so again, my name is Ayesha Wahab. I'm the state senator for this district. This district is one of the most populous state senate districts in the state of California with over one million individuals. Um, I will also say that it represents from Hayward down to San Jose, of course, covers the cities of the northern part of San Jose, Melpitas, Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, the unincorporated parts of Santa Clara, Alameda County's unincorporated area, as well as Fremont, Newark, Union City, and Hayward. Um, so I will go to the next slide, please. We're gonna be covering overall the bills that I've authored and got signed into law, some co-authored bills, um, public safety, fentanyl, budget wins, and some grant wins. And moving forward. All right. So, um, we have a very diverse district. In particular, you know, with the amount of, of people coming to this district, Silicon Valley, as well as this just being one of the best districts, uh, in the state of California. Um, you know, I really wanted to highlight our diversity. In particular, you know, we got a bill signed into law that allows for state employees to use an existing holiday time. So roughly eight hours or, uh, so for any of their own cultural or religious observances, regardless of whether or not they're Muslim, Christian, Jewish, uh, Hindu, Sikh, or any other religious background. Um, we actually went to the community and asked, you know, what are some of the holidays that are important to these communities, um, throughout the district? And we received a significant number of responses. Instead of listing them all out, like whether or not it's Eid or Diwali or, um, anything like that, we actually just made it very inclusive and said, you know, for the most part, you know, any holiday, any cultural observance can be granted. Uh, SB four sixty-two is another bill that got signed into law. Um, this is in partnership with Santa Clara County. In particular, you know, as a former foster child myself, um, when individuals that are on these different social services, whether it's adults or children or anybody in between, um, when they move from county to county, sometimes the services that are granted to them in one county may not translate into another county, and the data sharing between those counties were limited. This bill allows for the different counties to be able to talk to each other and share some of the services, um, that really actually are the safety net services for people who need it. So I'm very proud of that bill. Another bill that we partnered with Santa Clara County is SB four sixty-three. It's the reunification of parental cooperation, allowing individuals, you know, the state of California, in the Bay Area, we obviously have a very diverse, um, district, but the state in itself is very diverse. You know, there's rural parts of California as well as metro areas, and sometimes services are not provided in these rural communities. And we have allowed for the judge to take the discretion to see whether or not a parent is attempting, um, everything they can to be re-unified with their child. My sister is a social worker, and one of the main goals is always to be able to reunify the child with a parent or a family member. Otherwise, they are stuck in the system. So this is a very important bill to me personally, and I'm glad to be able to partner with Santa Clara County, which is one of the leaders in the nation on social services. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, one of the most important bills that we have actually pushed in light of obviously women's rights, victims' rights, as well as the Me Too movement, is, um, SB four sixty-four, which is the Survivors of Sexual Assault Bill of Rights. I pushed this bill in particular because, um, you know, oftentimes we see so many victims not get the information they need in a timely matter. Uh, rape kits aren't being tested. This allows for auditing, faster process, as well as additional witnesses and legal services provided to victims, um, when they are going through this system and interacting with law enforcement, as well as just the process of getting the justice they need. Um, this bill was backed by Me Too International, and I'm very proud that this bill, uh, was pretty much unanimous throughout the Senate as well as the Assembly. It was signed into law as well. Um, SB four sixty-five was refugee services. You know, I've constantly said that, you know, this district is incredibly diverse. We are seeing more and more refugees come to the state of California and in the Bay Area, specifically from whether it's the Middle East, whether it's Afghanistan, whether it's from Ukraine and throughout, you know, the Latin American communities. Um, we need to do more for refugees. And of course, you know, the American dream, you know, is something that is difficult to attain, but, uh, the services are now created on a website where it's one single source where a lot of refugees and the refugee service providers can go to. SB five 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 is called the Stable Affordable Housing Act. Um, this bill is the first of its kind in the nation, as well as the first ever social housing bill that has ever been signed into the state of California. It identifies roughly one point four million stable affordable homes, uh, through different types of partnership, but specifically focuses on moderate rate, low income, and extremely low income housing. Not only development, but preservation and much more. It's what many cities are focusing on. Um, I personally am very dedicated to creating more pathways to homeownership and affordable housing as a whole. Um, and this is one of the most important bills that literally will set the foundation for any future social housing bill or any particular type of housing bill because of the data that will be, um, uh, displayed once the, this bill is, uh, fully enacted. Next slide, please. So we worked on a number of bills, um, that have been signed by the governor, but we also co-authored and worked with a number of other, uh, senators and assembly members, uh, to push bills to get signed. In particular, I just wanna highlight this for the district and the public as a whole. SB fourteen was a human trafficking bill, uh, introduced by Senator Grove, who is a Republican. Um, this bill was introduced by the senator. It failed historically, and it was introduced to my public safety It failed historically and it was introduced to my Public Safety Committee in the Senate side. I am Chair of Public Safety. Uh, Senator Grove was amenable to some amendments to make this bill, um, you know, more valuable, if you will. And it was signed into law by the governor. It pretty much passed unanimously as well. I am a co-author of this particular bill. It is for harsher punishments to be seen as if you are to human traffic a child, uh, it will be considered a serious crime. This is very incredibly important because we all believe that a punishment needs to fit the crime and there's nothing more horrendous than trafficking children. Um, so, you know, I've worked on a number of other bills, including, um, emergency notifications, paid sick days, rent caps, uh, minimum wage, you know, women's rights bills and much more. And I highlight SB fourteen because it was a Republican bill led in a Democrat majority, uh, legislature. And I find it very important that we move past politics and personalities and really just focus on the policies. And I highlight that bill because it just shows the collaboration across both the Democrats and the Republicans on issues that really affect our district, our community and our children. So I just wanted to highlight that and I'm happy to move to the next slide. Uh, again, I am Chair of Public Safety. Oftentimes I, I take the chair role, uh, very seriously because this is one of the committees that can really harm society or really help society. We have over two hundred plus bills. I spend a lot of time on public safety, really refereeing other people's bills. Um, people have a lot of bills that are duplicative of current laws that are about, you know, what's happening in the media and so forth and not based on facts or data or anything like that. And we have to correct a lot of bills. And if members are willing to correct some of their bills, really trying to do no harm, if you will, and prioritize victims' rights is what I say the most on, uh, public safety. Uh, we are willing to work with anybody and everybody. And I'm very proud to say that we have passed ninety-five percent of those bills through our committee. Um, we have heard literally over two hundred plus bills and we have been open to all bills, regardless of whether it's coming from a Republican or Democrat. Um, it's incredibly important that we not be foolish in public safety, not listen to rhetoric, but look at the data and do the right thing for the larger community. So I'm very proud of that. Um, and moving to the next slide. You know, there's a number of bills that I have personally worked on, but, uh, you know, I will highlight SB four hundred that should be coming back. It is my personal bill with the City of San Jose's partnership to increase public, uh, tran- transparency regarding police. Um, and when cities are terminating an officer and they go through their due process, um, it is the right of city to announce to the public why that officer was terminated to ensure that the public has, uh, a deeper respect and understanding that our police departments do want to get rid of bad actors. Um, and so I really want to highlight this. Um, it has moved through the legislature. We have, uh, an amendment to correct certain language and hopefully it goes to the governor's desk by the end of January. And speaking of the governor, I do want to highlight that I was, uh, tapped to carry Senate Joint Resolution Number Seven. It's the Right to Safety Resolution, which primarily focuses on a constitutional convention being called for four commonsense firearms regulation. It's things that we all agree upon. It has been polled that Republicans, Democrats, uh, independents and so many people across different spectrums support. These are background checks. Uh, this is an increased, um, understanding of exactly some of the public safety laws regarding, um, gun safety, as well as probably the most controversial, but still strongly supported, a ban on assault weapons. So I just want to highlight that as a freshman to carry such legislation, first of its kind is incredibly important. Um, and it just really highlights the work of this district and my team. And, um, you know, I, I'm hoping to continue to work for this district. Next slide. Fentanyl is a large topic of conversation in the state Capitol. It may not be the, the biggest number one topic in Santa Clara County or Alameda County. However, a lot of bills have been introduced and I do sit on a fentanyl working group. This working group is comprised of not only myself as Chair of Public Safety and some committee members, but also the Chair of Health, the Chair of Judiciary, as well as the Chair of Business and Professions and a number of others. We have heard from subject matter experts in law enforcement, in the legal arena, from the DEA to, you know, the National Guard, to healthcare, um, experts, professors, you name it. We have heard from them throughout the year to really tackle our opioid and fentanyl crisis in a holistic way. Substance abuse is actually a mental health disorder and it's not often viewed that way. And many times families struggle to get their loved one into the appropriate treatment. So we are focused on not only law enforcement, um, treatment, support, um, life-saving drugs, insurance, so many different arenas regarding the drug crisis in, in the state of California that we have not historically tackled as aggressively or holistically. So I'm very proud of the work that we're going to introduce this January and I just wanted to highlight that. Next slide, please. Yes, we've worked on a lot of bills in this past year. Um, specifically, for example, AB ten sixty, which was Assembly Member Ortega's bill. I do not believe that that was signed into law. Uh, but these are to provide life-saving drugs in our, you know, public areas. So when we see potentially an overdose, that there are individuals that are able to help. Fentanyl is, is a powdered substance that in the smallest amount, at the tip of a pencil, can kill an individual. It has moved from literally the east coast to the west coast. It's in usually the, a powder substance. Oftentimes people are buying recreational drugs and not understanding that it may be laced with fentanyl, which is a synthetic drug. It is literally thousands of times more deadly than any other type of drug. It is also something that, you know, we see in the news. Fentanyl's highs last for about two hours. That is why so many people need it over and over and over and over and over again and they try to get larger doses. Whereas, you know, some of the historic drugs throughout the last several decades last for eight hours, six hours a day, so forth. So fentanyl is something that, um, is synthetic. It's, it's man-made and it's incredibly deadly to families and individuals. So, um, fentanyl is something that we have been working on as, uh, Public Safety Chair. Next slide. I will say that I'm very proud of this. I think, you know, the entire city council, for the most part, almost all of them, as well as staff, were there. Um, Milpitas had a budget win with my office of 1.6 million dollars for the Milpitas Smart Program. Uh, I will also highlight that the County of Santa Clara as a whole, we did give half a million dollars to the annual fellowship, uh, um, uh, for re-entry program. So, you know, this may not necessarily be in Milpitas, but the County of Santa Clara obviously serves Milpitas as well. So we're very proud of that. We hope to have more budget wins for the city of Milpitas. Um, you know, I, one of my first jobs was in, uh, Milpitas and so forth. So I, I really just love Milpitas as it has grown significantly in a lot of positive ways over the course of the last ten years. Uh, we want to continue a strong partnership and, um, next slide. Overall, as a freshman in an economic kind of uncertain time, we secured 10.6 million dollars for this entire budget. The city of Hayward, where I was a former council member, I started a pilot program called the Hayward Evaluation and Response Teams, which puts appropriate response to nine-one-one calls. We were able to secure another 1.2 million dollars for that pilot program to keep it running, as well as 2.5 million for a stack center, which is a youth and family center, uh, that is desperately needed in the city of Hayward. We have a number of other budget wins. Um, you know, 1.8 million dollars for overnight care, half a million for a housing navigation, 1.5 for Wi-Fi expansion. And I want to highlight this to the city council as sta- as well as staff. Primarily my areas of interest, uh, moving forward and, you know, in this upcoming cycle as well. I always care about housing at all income levels, number one. Infrastructure and projects and the amounts that I'm trying to award is large amounts that actually make an impact. Um, it's incredibly important to be able to make this impact, um, long-term. So you guys can actually see the benefits. You know, I, I see a lot of other electives that give maybe, you know, a quarter of a million dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, which is great. And they try to do more programs, but I also think that, you know, moving the programs that you guys work so hard on, uh, moving it in a more significant way. So I know that, you know, 1 point some odd million dollars actually makes a huge dent in some of the, the funds that you guys need to get those programs off the ground. Um, so I just really want to highlight that, that, you know, I look forward to your budget requests and moving forward. Um, and again, I'm very much focused on housing and protecting most vulnerable communities as much as possible, especially during an economic downturn. Those are usually the things that get hit the hardest. Um, so that's important to me. Next slide. Our district grant wins, I want to highlight this to, um, not only the city and staff. You know, we roughly have a regular meeting with city staff, um, specifically city manager's office and whoever else they'd like to invite, primarily to, to ensure that we are a proper partner in the sense that as you guys are applying for grants at the state level and the federal level in housing and public safety, in infrastructure and climate change and much more, we want to be a partner and advocate at the state level, as well as the federal level, to secure funding that is desperately needed for our district. Um, you know, I truly, truly believe that we are here to serve this district and whatever projects you guys have, if we are informed, if we are up to date on some of the details and so forth, we can advocate. And in our very short year, officially last year at this time, I was sworn in. And in one year, we have secured forty-five million dollars for housing. We have secured 12 million dollars for housing in, in different areas, including low income and rehabilitative services and so forth, as well as secured funding for climate change with the governor's office and much more. We will continue to be working partners with all of you. Um, next slide, please. And our district office, we're still getting staffed up, but I do just want to say that we are incredibly active. My district director is a licensed marriage and family therapist. Um, my staff member Astrid has a background. They both have a background working with homeless individuals, schizophrenic individuals, um, uh, individuals that are seeking job security and much more. They are deeply, deeply committed, every single one of my staff members, in serving the public. In this short year, we have done different events from Women's Day to having free tax preparation, senior resource fairs, backpack giveaways, as well as just in the last two to three weeks, we gave eight hundred and seventy turkeys to families throughout the district. These are for needy families, um, that could not afford it. And eight hundred and seventy turkeys literally feeds nearly a thousand families, right? So we're very proud of the work that we've done. This past December, you know, just starting off this past Friday, we had a small business workshop, uh, partnered with the city of Fremont, um, but open to all, the Fremont, um, Chamber of Commerce. Uh, people, we're going to continue that because people actually received it really well. It's not only to help small businesses, but also we're going to be working a little bit more with the cities to help in cybersecurity and much more. We have a winter clothing giveaway that's coming up as well, but I just want to say that you will see our staff at different, um, events, but we are also hosting a number of events. So I'm very proud of that moving forward. Uh, we're going to try to partner wherever we can. Next slide, please. So we have this event. Um, we've partnered with a lot of different state agencies. I really want to highlight cybersecurity because it's something that's very difficult for a lot of people, as well as funding options for small businesses. Small businesses often are afraid or think that they aren't, uh, you know, capable of securing funding. Uh, our office is willing to work with any business to ensure that, you know, funding is secured for the businesses in our district that really provide local jobs. That's incredibly important to me. So, um, next slide, please. Our district office, this is the direct, uh, number to our office. This is the direct, um, email address to my district director. Uh, again, we are more than happy to help where we can. Next slide. Uh, you can follow us on any of the social medias, whether it's Instagram, X or Facebook. Uh, and I'm happy to answer questions. Next slide. Yeah, do you guys have any questions?
First, first of all, thank you very much, Senator Wahab, for, for your presentation. And, uh, I will ask the city council if they would like to have any further questions of you. And, um, first let me ask the public and then I'll ask the city council. Is there anyone from the public that would like to ask any questions of Senator Wahab? Mr. Montemayor.
I'm impressed, Your Honor, Volteer Montemayor of Milpitas. Yeah, I'm kind of wondering, how did it happen that District Ten is composed of the area of South Alameda and Northeast Santa Clara?
Definitely. So historically, it's been that way. It's historically been mostly Alameda County, roughly sixty percent or a little bit more, a little bit less, depending on the redistricting efforts. Uh, right now, it's about fifty-fifty. So it's almost fifty-fifty-ish, maybe fifty-five Alameda County. Um, it's based on population, geography. There's a whole committee. It's a whole process. Every single ten years or decade or so, there's a redistricting effort and the Senate lines are drawn around that time. Uh, we were running for office when these Senate lines were drawn, so we weren't actually sure where our lines would eventually land. Um, but it's historically been around from Hayward down to San Jose. Uh, we absorbed, um, Sunnyvale for the first time ever. So, uh, District Ten now represents Sunnyvale. Um, and, you know, we are looking to partner with all our cities and just really elevate the voice of our community.
Yeah, thank you. It's, it's really a great district that you cover. Thank you. I have valid, uh, validized questions, but that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to make any comments? Okay, so, um, I really appreciate, Senator Wahab, I really appreciate your spirit of collaboration. You said you, uh, reached across the aisle, went to the Republicans and guess the bottom line is to really do what's right for the community and, and I really like that. So I'm going to ask my city council if they have any questions of you and I'll call on Vice Mayor Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, like the mayor said, thank you, Senator Wahab, for giving us status on what's going on over there at the Senate. It's very seldom. I think this is the first time I've been here three, three years, the first time we got an update. And thank you so much. Um, my question is, Senator Wahab, with the state deficit, well, how are you going to manage that? And I know you, you, you have these projects that you're going through. How is that, uh, going to affect your, your, your projects that is being funded through, to this deficit that we're going through?
Definitely. So, um, the Senate and the Assembly operate a little bit differently. They each have a say in the budget. I do not sit on the budget, uh, subcommittees. Our budget chair is a little bit north of us. It's Senator Skinner, Nancy Skinner. Uh, you know, she has really led the effort on the Senate side. And Assembly Member Phil Ting from San Francisco has really led the effort on the Assembly side. Uh, with that being said, the collaboration is between the two houses and eventually the governor's office as well. So the governor sets forward the budget. Um, that's our starting point, if you will. Um, the Senate, we all advocate. We have, um, usually our caucuses meet. And when we discuss the different things that are happening, it's largely talking about the budget in those caucus meetings to say what is our priorities in our individual districts, as well as, you know, just for the state of California. Uh, this past year, we were told early on that we also were facing a deficit, um, that we've obviously completely minimized. And the goal of the Senate and the Senate leadership is to protect our progress. So in the course of the last ten years, we've seen obviously a growth in our economy and we're the fourth largest economy in the world. Um, we have consistently tried to ensure that if we have programs regarding women, regarding children, regarding seniors, regarding any of these types of programs, that we protect it and we do not cut them first. That's first and foremost, right? As much as we can protect the progress when it comes to these social issues, we want to. We are also prioritizing infrastructure. We hear reports all the time, whether it's our bridges, whether it's our streets, whether it's whatever the case may be, we need to protect that. And then as far as individual budget concerns, right? Um, so, you know, our district office, you know, has been working with each of the cities. And I want to say these budget wins that I shared are not guaranteed, number one, right? So in hard times, we have to make hard So in hard times, we have to make hard choices, right? And we are prioritization and possibly even the amount is significantly lower. I will say the Assembly tends to get more funding, uh, primarily because, you know, they run a two-year cycle. They have, um, a smaller district, they can get larger effort of, um, support in, in that regard. And the Senate obliges to give them a little bit more funding. Um, with that being said, is that again, this is not guaranteed. We prioritize our list, our budget chair fights for us, but the battle is between the, you know, Assembly, the Senate, as well as the governor's office. So there's a lot of chefs in the kitchen. And if we could make a stew that works for everybody, we try to. But again, I think that, you know, our Senate leadership is very fair. Um, and we trying to, try to mostly prioritize protecting our progress, progress as well as the most vulnerable communities. So next year may look completely different. You guys have heard some of the announcements of California's potential deficit. Um, and, and so forth. So I will be advocating for this district in any and every way I can.
Okay, thank you so much. On the projects that you have, I'm really, I'm really working on two things. It's the fentanyl, which is I'm passionate about and the climate change. Who should I reach out to, to your office? Because we need help. I met with our police chief and our fire chief on how to address the fentanyl issue here in Milpitas. And who should I reach out to? Because we need some help and guidance.
Definitely. Um, I believe that there's a lot of, uh, fentanyl, there's particularly a fentanyl, um, uh, support that the Santa Clara County is actually providing. Uh, we just shared that information with a number of other people this morning, in fact. Um, and then my district director, her email address was listed in the presentation.
Okay.
Um, but it's nurgis.gizada@sen.ca.gov. Uh, I know that's hard to spell, um, but.
I think I, I took a picture of the phone and the email. So I will reach out to her.
Yeah, the council member, if you send an email out to her, we will prioritize whatever request, uh, the city of Milpitas will have on those two issues.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there anyone else that would like to ask Senator Waha some questions or comments? Hey, I don't see Nisa. Thank you very much, Senator Waha. It was a pleasure having you here.
I appreciate the partnership, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, and we welcome you anytime.
Bye.
Okay, thank you. And now it is, um, the next, consider, this is item seventeen. And this is a, with, uh, city manager, we'll go ahead and announce this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Our second item tonight is a presentation from, uh, Councilmember Nesa Ligor from the city of Los Altos. She currently serves or will serve as the board chair for the Cities Association of Santa Clara County. And for the past several months, more than a year, the association has been considering the formation of a joint powers authority. And the agreement is before you tonight. And so the board chair had asked for some time to come and make a presentation to you. And we welcome the council member here and I'll turn the time over to her for a presentation on the JPA agreement.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager and hi, Mayor and council members and Vice Mayor Chua. Nice to see all of you virtually. Um, I will try to be brief. Um, I think this is your last meeting, um, for the year. And, um, you know, as your city manager said, I am the incoming chair for the Cities Association. And I also served on the subcommittee with the current president, Margaret Abicoga, um, to move this joint powers authority agreement forward and to transition the Cities Association from an unincorporated association to a JPA. And I think your staff will be showing the presentation as I go through. Um, but I, I think it's, you know, appropriate for me to follow State Senator Waha, where she talked about the spirit of collaboration. Because when you talk to members of the Cities Association and former members, they will highlight all the things they love about the Cities Association and how we're able to collaborate and do things together. And so I thought it was very appropriate to follow Senator Waha, um, to bring forward the Cities Association request tonight. As your city manager said, um, we are transitioning to a joint powers authority. And the ask tonight of your council is to approve joining the joint powers authority. Next slide. So the history of Cities Association, we were formed in nineteen ninety, so decades ago. And we have evolved in many ways, but one of the ways that we have not evolved, it's the actual structure of the organization. And that's due to different reasons. And so we're very happy to say tonight, we have twelve cities already in Santa Clara County who have approved moving forward with the JPA. Um, you know, we have evolved, um, and taking on different projects. And we'll mention a couple of those in the next slides. But ultimately, you know, the Cities Association has always aimed to do projects that benefit all fifteen cities in Santa Clara County. And we do that through collaboration and working together. We decided several years ago, and I, I wasn't around, and I don't know if Mayor Montana was around, um, to explore moving to a JPA. Um, initially because of some issues related to the association's tax status. But more recently, for legal and liability reasons, it was recommended by our attorney, and we're on our third attorney right now as a Cities Association, to move to a joint powers authority. And so that's what brought us here today. And if you have questions later about, um, what are the benefits to having a JPA, we will also address those. But we explored different structures, um, for the organization, knowing that the current structure was not protecting each of the different cities. Next slide. Here are some examples of things we have accomplished as a Cities Association. Silicon Valley Clean Energy, I think that's the first time I met you, Mayor, um, when we served on SVCE. That was created through collaboration from CSAC members at the time. The Single Use Plastic Ban Ordinances, which was passed by all fifteen cities in Santa Clara County, some version of the ordinance, um, also originated as part of a Cities Association meeting. The Healthy Cities Dashboard and other collaborations with the Santa Clara County Departments. And of course, the Planning Collaborative, where on behalf of all fifteen cities, the Cities Association applied and is the administrator for the Planning Collaborative, which I know works with a lot of our planning staff and is very instrumental in helping us get through the housing element update. Next slide. And here are just a couple other accomplishments during COVID. We were able to work together, um, under the Cities Association umbrella to collaborate and work directly with the county, um, to ensure that our residents were safe and we were sharing ideas. Um, because as you know, we're fifteen cities, um, but our residents work in our different cities and we cross our borders all the time. And so what happened in one city, especially during COVID, it was important for other cities, um, to be aware of it so we could all work together. And then the last thing, um, we have on the slide is LAC, which is the Legislative Action Committee. And this is where we all work together to give feedback, take positions, and also advocate for different bills in Sacramento. And we've also historically taken positions on ballot measures that impact our cities here in Santa Clara County. The LAC operates separate from the board, even though the board is the approving authority. But the LAC really helps to educate all our cities on the different bills we just heard from State Senator Waha. But we're able to bring all the different bills that we think are relevant, that will impact our city. Not only bills introduced or sponsored by our local representatives, but, but, um, legislators up and down the state, we're able to bring those bills to each city representative, have a discussion, discuss amongst ourselves how it may impact our cities, and then take a position. And I have heard so many times from different legislators how they look to the Cities Association because they recognize that hearing from, you know, twelve cities or thirteen cities or all fifteen cities, um, is a much stronger voice than one city speaking up. And so they do pay attention to the positions and recommendations we take as a Cities Association. And that's a voice the Cities Association provides. Next slide. What is a JPA? And I know you're all familiar with a JPA. We serve on different JPAs in our capacities, um, as council members. But it's a legally created entity under state law that allows public agencies like, um, cities to jointly exercise common powers. You have a copy of the draft JPA and it lays out how we would operate as a JPA. Um, one thing we'd like to share is the actual Joint Exercise Powers Act that's in state law. It outlines all the different things a JPA could do. We're not required to do it, it's what we could do. And as we went through the process of developing a JPA agreement with input from council members, for example, Mayor Montana, she has been your, um, avid representative on our Cities Association, giving feedback and asking tough questions. As we went through the process, we were able to look at the JPA and say what works for Santa Clara County cities. How would we like our JPA to operate? And that's what's before you. It's a document that reflects input feedback, um, from the representatives from all the fifteen cities about what our JPA should look like. Next slide. And this continues to explain what's a JPA, um, you know, the process we would need to go through to establish ourselves as a JPA. And I'll touch on that briefly. Uh, as you may know, to form the JPA, we needed eight or more cities. We now have twelve cities that have approved joining the JPA, so we have, we have enough cities and we're moving forward. The next step is for us to hopefully have all fifteen cities sign on by January first. So our attorneys can file the documentation with the state to establish us as a JPA. The tentative date that we would be effective as a JPA would be February first. And then we would have to move on to redrafting and revising our bylaws. The Cities Association currently has bylaws. And, um, the attorney's review of the bylaws, um, shows that some of the terms in the bylaws will still apply. And so those would carry over to the JPA. But I know from talking to many of you and other council members that there are terms in the bylaws that we want to revisit as a board, and there are also new terms that we want to add to the bylaws. And so starting in February, we'll have representatives from all the cities working together on updating our bylaw so they reflect how we want our new JPA to operate. Next slide. And here are just some of the benefits of forming a JPA. As I mentioned, we've been a Cities Association unincorporated entity for decades now. Um, and, you know, the four benefits I want to highlight are one, we now will have clarity on our tax status, um, as an unincorporated entity, that was an issue. And, and we made many attempts as an organization to work with IRS, um, and other entities to get clarity there without success. Another benefit to having a JPA over an unincorporated association is it protects each city. The JPA would be its own entity. And so in the event, um, you know, and, you know, I think we're all familiar with what happened over the last couple of years with regards to a claim that was filed. If we were a JPA at that time, it would have better protected our cities and protected our cities from liability. Another benefit to, uh, forming a JPA is it gives us access to a wider insurance pool. Because of the same claim I just mentioned, we lost our insurance. Um, because we were an unincorporated entity and there was a lot of uncertainty there. And so by moving to a JPA, it gives us access to more insurance pools. And having insurance again would protect our cities and the JPA as an entity. Um, you know, in the event there's another claim filed, hopefully not, but just having insurance would be obviously better for, um, the JPA. And the fourth reason, um, to move to a JPA is as a JPA, we can now apply for grants. Um, we have a very small budget, um, we all contribute to the small budget and it's rarely to cover our independent contractors, um, and to fund the different events in our meetings that we have every year. Sometimes we will, you know, want to do bigger events or bigger collaborations or host, um, you know, legislators and have some form of summit. Currently, the practice is to figure out how within our, you know, small budget to fund these things. But as a JPA, we would be able to apply for grants to bring in that additional funding. So we don't have to go back to each city and increase their dues. Next slide. And here are the highlights of the draft, uh, JPA. And, and this responds to a lot of the feedback we heard from the representatives from the different cities. Um, you know, one of the concerns was, and, and for those of you who are not familiar with the structure of the Cities Association, we have an executive committee and then we have the Board of Directors. The executive committee acts as the administrative arm of the Cities Association. That, so that's the president, the vice president, secretary, treasurer, and sometimes the lack chair. The role of the executive committee is clearly defined in the draft JPA. Prior to the JPA, I will admit, as someone who has been on the executive committee, it wasn't clearly defined. And so one of the benefits of the new JPA is we clearly make, we clearly articulate in the JPA that the executive committee's authority is limited to what is delegated to the executive committee by the Board of Directors. So the Board of Directors is the decision maker for the Cities Association, not the executive committee. And we also clarified in the JPA that we will no longer hire employees. This was an issue again in the last couple of years. And so we will no longer hire employees and we have that documented and clearly stated in the JPA. Um, you know, professional services like what is provided by our executive director and or attorneys will be viewed as services provided by independent contractors. Um, or, or independent contractors also cannot become members of CalPERS because they would not be eligible. So those are some of the highlights in the draft JPA that's before you. And these were intentional and responsive to the feedback we received from the cities. Next slide. Budget and membership dues, this is a question that has come up. And so we're preempting any question you may have about, uh, dues. Uh, the plan right now, um, is for the executive director to bring forward the budget for next year with the same dues that our cities have been paying for the last two years. There is no proposal to increase the dues regardless of the number of cities who join the JPA. Um, the decision will be up to the board. The executive director will make that suggestion and recommendation that we keep the same dues. And your representative on the board will get to vote on that. Um, if the total amount of our budget ends up being less than what it was last year, then the board would have the responsibility and authority to adjust the budget accordingly. Um, but that is the plan for the dues. We do not plan, there is no plan to increase the dues for our members. Next slide. And, and I already touched on this, just the value of being a member of the Cities Association. I, I, you know, I know, you know, apart from the social part of it, we're very productive. Um, and I think it helps, we all rise together as we help each other, um, you know, tackle different issues in our communities. Next slide. So next steps, um, all member cities, um, who vote to approve, uh, joining the JPA, you will have your city manager, um, sign the JPA. And then we would dissolve the unincorporated association. So as I mentioned before, the planned effective date for the JPAs February first. And so we aim to dissolve the unincorporated association, January thirty first, twenty twenty four. We'll register with the Secretary of State, we'll update the bylaws as a new JPA. And then we will also prepare personnel policy handbooks, which would include policies regarding managing independent contractors and board members. These are things that the board members would work on and make the decision about how they want our Cities Association to move forward and to be managed and operated. Um, and, and I can't underscore that enough, that it is the Board of Directors that will have that authority. Next slide. And so again, the ask tonight is, uh, we respectfully ask that you please approve the, the Cities Association JPA. Um, you know, we'd love for you to join the, the rest of the cities, um, and so that we can continue to being a strong voice. Thank you so much, Mayor, and I am here for questions.
Thank you very much, Nisa. This is a really great, your presentation. And I know that I, I did ask some tough questions when I, the last time we met. And I know that I did ask some tough questions the last time we met. But, and I know we're still going to go through the bylaws. So and I, I'm hopeful that this agency will take off and really make a big difference in how we, you know, make sure that we keep our local control. And I really, really appreciate when we go over the legislative, the bills that come before us. That really gives us an opportunity to send our voice to Sacramento. So we have Vice Mayor here that would like to make a comment here. Would you like to speak, Nisha? Okay. So hold on.
First of all, thank you so much, Councilmember Ligor, for being, for gracing us with your presence and great presentation. I know Milpitas was tough on the, on the CAs, SCC. You're one of those that asked the tough questions, even from fellow board members from the Silicon Valley Clean Energy. So you must have heard about this as well. I met with our city attorney and also our city manager. And they went through, through the new proposed JPA. And all my questions were answered. And the legal side of it, and also from our city manager and, and of course, our city attorney. So I will support this one. Thank you again for coming. And also another council member from your city is here. Do you want to say a few words? Come on up.
Is that our executive director?
Yes, yes. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you. And nice seeing you.
Thank you, Lisa.
No, I just wanted to thank you all for considering the JP tonight. And as our chair said, thank you for asking the tough questions because I think that makes the document that much better. So I'm here for moral support.
Thank you. Thank you for coming here. That shows dedication.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Really glad you're here. So and I think we have another council member, Councilmember Lynn.
Quick question, Councilmember. Who are your Board of Directors?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. So every year, so the Board of Directors consists of one representative from each member city. And each year, and I don't know how Milpitas does it, maybe the mayor can explain. But typically, each city with the different appointments the mayor makes to different commissions and JPAs, the Citizens Association appointment is one of those appointments. And so your mayor, or I don't know how it's done in Milpitas, but assuming it's the mayor, your mayor would appoint someone to sit on the Cities Association Board. Typically, it's the mayor. It doesn't have to be the mayor for the Board of Directors. But typically, it's the mayor that appoints him or herself to serve on the board. And it's a one-year term. So every year, the appointment is made again. But that brings up another point, which is the Cities Association also has two other committees. The other committee is the Cities Selection Committee. And that is a group that appoints to regional boards. And that's actually a legally mandated committee. And the law requires that the mayor sits on that committee. So there's no flexibility there. For the selections committee, the mayor has to serve on that committee. And then the third committee under the Cities Association umbrella is the Legislative Action Committee. And again, your mayor or appointing individual points someone from your council to sit on LAC, the Legislative Action Committee, again, for a one-year term.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lynn. And so just to let you know, so the, the members elect within their, who wants to be in the executive committee. So that's how that works. Okay, anyone else? If not, we have, I'll go ahead, public comment.
When we hear, let me start from the GPA, joint power authority. It's an authority. And then Cities Association of Santa Clara County. That's big. It's special. I hope there's no overlapping or mixing with the county's officers. I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not questioning. This is great. So we should be a member. We should go for it. And this is a special power. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. So with that, I would like to make a motion.
We have no additional speakers.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, to serve on, for our city to be part of the JPA. There a second?
Second.
Second. Take a vote.
Councilmember Baradello.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leeann.
Aye.
Councilmember Pham.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
And I am an aye.
So this is past unanimity. Thank you, everyone, for showing up and for doing the presentation. It was great.
Thanks, Councilmembers. We will see you on December fourteenth for the holiday party.
Yes, oh, yeah, yes. So there's going to be a holiday party and hopefully all of you can join us or join the. Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Carmen. Thank you.
Thank you.
City manager and city attorney. Thank you both.
Thank you. So next, move on to our announcements and future agenda items. City Manager, Nat Thomas.
I do have one announcement tonight. I sent an email earlier today to the council for the public who may be tuning in. I'm pleased to announce that the city of Milpitas was awarded a Land and Water Conservation Fund grant from the California Department of Parks and Recreation to complete the log, the large dog park at Delano-Monong's Park. So the city is among awardees across the state, cities and open space organizations. But we are the only city in Santa Clara County to receive this type of award. So the matching grant of three hundred and one thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars will create a new dog park section for log, large dogs, and that's with fencing, paving, site furnishings, landscaping, et cetera. And that will allow those same funds then to be freed up, to be used elsewhere within the metro area. And that grant will be jointly administered by the Department of Recreation and Community Services and Engineering. So that we can receive the grant funds.
That is really great. And I'm sure that our staff worked really hard to get those grants that she met. So thank you so much. Let me see. Councilmembers, do you have anything, any other announcements? I would like to have one announcement on, I'd like to bring as a referral, the twenty percent, the low market rate, but I'd like for us to be creative because we are lacking in the really below, low income. And maybe we can figure out how we can have new developments, incorporate that really, really below income for our housing element, housing element. So, okay, with that, I want to thank you, everyone.
We need to call for consensus, Mayor.
Oh, and yes, I do need a consensus. Right. Okay, so let's have.
Councilmember Baradello.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leeann.
No.
Councilmember Pham.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
And I am an aye. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Meeting adjourned.